Okay, all right, it is 7:01. It's time to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, can you give us an opening prayer?
Sure. Lord, give us the strength to make the decisions necessary for the city in the best interest of all of our citizens.
I'm here. I think so. There's soup there and chips, I think.
Number one, thank you Greg, and pray that the Buckeyes pull out of win and get a L-bell.
Amen, go Bucks!
I saw it had my microphone.
We can hear you!
We can hear you!
Roll call, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, here.
Yes.
Mr. Beckley?
Yes.
Mr. Grant? Here.
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Today we want to have a chance to review the meetings, or the minutes from the last regular meeting and the December 17 special meeting.
2:03.
I'll second that.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Beckley?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, business, or citizens comments, do we have anything?
Nothing yet.
Okay, all right, business and organizational comments. Committee discussions and rep, uh, committee discussions. I need to call a Parks and Rec meeting to discuss the, the building, uh, as you enter the park.
No doubt.
The duck fell, uh, I say one time it take a boot. Does it take a boot? So, uh, we'll call that sometime here in the next few, in, in the very-
Recent future?
Recent future. Not our time, but- Recent, again. In the, in the near future.
There you go.
All right, um, and I will get Elizabeth and Justin and see what time works for them and call it, so. Or not, anything else? Any other, any other meetings?
We're, um, working on scheduling our planning and development committee meetings, um. Really for the first six months of the year, we have dates for everything except January. We've got to talk about it tonight, um, but otherwise, um, I could tell you what our plans are not for January, but for other ones, um, hang on. There we go. Um, otherwise, we're gonna meet, uh, Tuesday, February 16th, Monday, March 15th, Monday, April 19th, Monday, May 17th, and Monday, June 21st, all at 7:00 p.m.
Nice, thank you. Are you gonna meet in January? You just don't have it scheduled?
We just don't have a date yet. We have conflict with sports and different things, so we're trying to figure out it.
I understand it's just a fault.
So if, if we can, yeah, if, yeah, if we can meet in January, we will. If not, we might wait and have our first meeting in February, but, um, I'm a planner. So I prefer to have everything planned out and, um, you know, we're, we're setting agenda items, the things we want to accomplish in the first half of the year.
Are you guys working on the campaign work?
Campaign is number one.
Nice. All right.
Hey Greg, would it be possible to do a, another utility meeting, uh, next week sometime?
Next Monday would be good if it's good with Dan and Tony.
I'm there.
Yep, good.
All right.
Thank you. Seven, six, five, four, that'd be great.
Six, Greg.
Is there any cha, is there any chance we could do during the day?
That would be fantastic. I can do it whenever. I'm awful Mondays, so you call it. Dan's, you know, Dan doesn't work, so.
Let's try for one, let's try for 1:00 p.m. That'd work better for me.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Perfect.
Well, I'm sorry Carly, we'll go to ten now.
Dan, do you need to call in?
What do you see was on my agenda for the day?
Okay.
Jealous?
A paper, a little bit.
All right, now, we are ready for-
All right, Barbara.
Mr. Barber.
So Mr. Barber was not able to join us due to an incident on Fort Street.
Okay.
And, um, a lot of his will be talking about the hiring process, which, uh, I can, uh, bring you up to date when it's my turn, because I have revenues for fire as well.
That will be fine. Okay, all right, now we're moving on for our ordinances. We've got ordinance 01-
Tony, can I get my report from last?
Yeah.
I'm not on the schedule, so.
No.
I'm kidding, go ahead.
Well, I'll motion to, uh, amend the agenda to hear the auditor's report from last week.
I'll second that.
And the treasurer's report?
Yep.
He gave it, he gave his.
Yep.
For the number.
The treasurer's report was hard to do.
Yeah. It was real brief. It was just the, the summaries of-
Oh, okay.
I technically have December ready if you want me to go get it, but it's kind of like, I'll wait till next time.
No, we'll wait, we got a game.
We're a game. Carly, can you believe these people in their sports?
All right, we're done.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Beckley?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you council. Um, we'll start here with the auditor's report. This is actually, since I had the moment. Uh, I've just combined November and December and the year-end discussion, so you won't have to hear a report from me, uh, for several weeks. So if you don't mind, the next slide, how did our fund balances change? You'll see on the next page, in both months, the city spent more than the city brought in. Uh, much of the revenues addition, I'm sorry, much of these expenses, what I'm supposed to say, the additional expenses were outlaying for projects, CARES Act, and department heads meeting the 12 on purchasing deadline. In these months, the general fund, water, street funds increased, uh, sewer fund decreased. And you will see new funds on your next page, the 751, the 752, 753. These are sewer funds set up through the resolution earlier this year and comply with USDA loan requirements. They receive a transfer from the sewer fund of around 22,000 a year, um, mostly for payment purposes. Uh, I'm gonna have to get closer for this one. You will see, at the bottom where I was talking about additional expenditures over revenues, this is for November.
So what is that? I'm looking at it on my computer, which one is that?
73, 53?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You're okay, you're right. It's the cash report for November, so you'll see, uh, 715,026,29 brought in, 824,175,48 was spent and outlaid. Uh, there's where you'll see, um, while although the general fund fell this month, it will increase into the next month, but increase for the year. Street funds steady, capital steady, water, uh, increased and so on. So the next slide will be December, looks very similar, but just different numbers. 654,237,58 brought in, uh, almost a million spent in the month, which is a pretty rare feat for us, uh, the month of December. And this is our final balances. Um, so besides a few tweaks that we're working on with the state auditors, this far right column, the ending balance, is the ending balance for all of our funds. And the total is the balance of our, all of our funds put together. You'll see increases in the, excuse me, in the general fund, uh, steady street funds, if not just slightly smaller. Increase in the water fund, a decrease in the sewer fund, and the other funds sort of are awash. So the next slide, as at the end of year, are, are our funds healthy? You'll see the general fund here at 447, almost 448. Red denotes that it's not to a healthy status yet. All street funds combined just under healthy status, rec lower, although higher than it began the year with. Capital and water at healthy status, that's what, this is the first month for water being at healthy status, and sewer below, uh, healthy status.
Taylor, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the capital or the general fund has increased. It was, it's much better than it was last year.
Correct, so the general fund started at $106,000 and ended with $447,000. The next slide is just gonna be a quick breakdown of November expenses and revenues. Considering I'm giving December's report, this isn't terribly helpful information, uh, other than just seeing where we were at. You'll see some of the funds, uh, like the permissive tax, water deposits, and a few other funds coming close to, uh, fully collected revenue status for the year. On the next slide is just the end of year revenue report. So top revenues that hit or exceeded goals, local government sales tax, miscellaneous receipts. Many of those miscellaneous receipts are from things like, uh, the sales that council authorized from the lock, with, uh, authorized the city manager to do. Some new one-time revenues, and these were substantially 66,000 in 2020. Uh, refunds, rebates from workers' comp were $220,000 larger than 2019, which is an extremely high, or large increase for the city of Nelsonville. Water rates hit expectations and just went over them. And income tax, uh, beat 2019 and also beat expectations despite a lot of the economic turmoil. Top revenues that missed were sewer, uh, by the largest amount. Uh, the recreation fund missed due to the partial full season, and the gas and street funds missed by about 13,000, I'm sorry, gas tax, missed by about 13,000, uh, which was less than half of the loss we were on track for back in May. So that was, uh, not the worst news either. Uh, as far as expenses, almost all funds came in under budget this year. Most non-utility funds spent less than 2019, some were very close. Uh, in practice, what I saw was as revenues squeezed down due to the economic shutdown, many of our expenses, they've got a type of there, came down appropriately to make up for the gap. These were made by decisions, these were due to decisions from council, department heads, and the city manager. Uh, utilities saw increased expenses due to increased rates, as well as operations across street, water, sewer operations. And the next slide, uh, just shows what I've already said, increases in the general water, water deposit fund, decreases in the street funds. Sewer capital improvement, uh, and most others held steady. The next slide. Uh, this is just a lot of information to say that the city is, it's, it's in one of the stronger financial positions in many years. Uh, there were many years of declines. This was the first year we haven't had one in four years, I believe. Uh, overall, we increased city balances by 332,488. That's out of a budget of a six, five to six million dollars. Uh, so a marginal increase, but an increase nevertheless. Um, for the first time in well over five or six years, the general fund will not run negative at any point in 2021 barring calamity. Typically, it runs negative for up to six months due to differences of time between when we collect the revenue and when our expenses are due. The right column just is a caveat. I just want to say that we shouldn't have the impression that we are flush or wealthy. Uh, many of the funds still only have a couple months of expenses, and we have no idea if job cuts will continue in the city, the state, uh, in the country. In fact, most experts think they will. On the next slide, um, I just want to say quickly, the state audit wrapped up last week. You'll see that report here by the end of the month. That is pretty late, but due to the investigation, that's why it was late. For citizens at home, due to delays in the mail, we are accepting water abatement payment signups after today's deadline. Um, and if you experience delays in payment from the city due to the mail, please contact my office at 753-2233. Uh, we have a good dozen or two checks that were sent a month ago, today, that we're still waiting on to arrive, so. Serious delays, but just call us if you have questions. And if you could have a quick, could you put that link for me? I'm sorry, I'm right there. I'm required to just briefly present, uh, our financial indicators from the state.
From?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. And I will just skip through to the important ones. Oh, there it is. Okay, these are 2019 financial health indicators. These are really nice graphics to help show, uh, the financial health of the city in 2019. Unfortunately, between yellow and red statuses combined, 2019 was the worst since they started these reports. Uh, green, of course, meaning positive outlook for these indicators, so if you don't mind scrolling, Scott. I'll quickly, it should be the next page. Okay. Um, indicator number two here is a cautionary outlook. This is essentially unassigned fund balances means amount of the fund, uh, that is not tied up already in expenses. Uh, if you could scroll down just a little bit for me, you can see that for several years, the city's indicator on this data has decreased, uh, rapidly. I can hear whispers, council.
Just gotta run the machine over there.
You can keep scrolling, keep scrolling. These are all just basic ways of measuring the general fund and our assets. For many years, they've gone down, if you look at them. Critical outlook, this is an indicator here, number five, is general fund balance as a percentage of general fund revenues. We crossed them to critical in 2019. We should fall out of that in 2020, thankfully. Property tax revenue indicator six is good. Uh, income tax revenue, indicator seven is probably the last one I really need to cover. You can just see that it decreased greatly from year to year. Every year for over five years, if you look at these bar charts, uh, was a decrease from the year before. So much so that if you add these missed revenues, what, if they had just held steady, it would equal almost $500,000 in missed revenue opportunities for the city over four years. But income tax revenues increased this year, so hopefully we're out of that indicator 2020. Yeah, the rest is boilerplate, really.
So Taylor, how long are you spending the water abatement, uh, sign up?
I, I would think that I would take it at least for two weeks, considering we have payments as late as they are.
So by the end of January?
Yeah. Well.
Taylor, can someone just write a $30 check and bring it over and put it in the, uh, uh, the drop box? Uh, as a, so that they're, they want to get signed up, they don't end up getting it in late mail or something?
Yes, there's a form online, um, and it also should have been mailed to them if they still have it, but yeah, they can drop it off in the, uh, drop box.
All right, does it take the form, or if you just wrote on your check for water abatement, would that work, or do you have to have the form?
Yeah, I mean, it would work as long as they only have one account, you know, if it was, if they have two or three rentals, it would be hard to know which ones.
I got another question. Well, last year, uh, what, overall, what was, what was the overall income tax collections? Because me and you had a long discussion last year about that.
Um, are you talking 2019?
Uh, no, 2020.
2020, I've got the number here. Austin? Sorry, give me just a sec. So this, so 2020, we collected 1.529 million in income tax, uh, which is a $31,000 increase from the year before.
All right, so I guess my base question is, we took an extra 10% from the capital improvement fund just to, to put it to the general fund, because the general fund was in such sad shape. And, uh, so in March that expires, it should go back to, uh, 1585 split. And we do a lot of our street paving and stuff from capital improvements or have in the past, so what would be able to do that?
Our, our current budget makeup doesn't allow for that, um, so council would have to tell me where to take from. They would basically tell me 10% of general fund about.
Well, we extended it to, we, by ordinance, we extended it to March. Uh, we just did that in December.
We were gonna revisit.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, i- if the general fund's in good shape, I'd like to go back to doing some capital improvement projects. People really want their streets fixed.
Well, we were gonna look at that through the finance committee in March when it happens, and then we need to fix our infrastructure before we start paving the streets.
Well, infrastructure also comes out of capital improvement, so I, I realize we had to do it for the general fund because we're in sad shape, but we need to get back to capital improvements, infrastructure, and streets and stuff, so I would encourage the finance committee to do that.
My, my advice to finance and to council in general, and I, I believe Scott is of similar mind, uh, is that a lot of those projects should come from those funding sources and not capital improvements. So now that the water fund is appropriately funded with rates, uh, you guys can run water projects through there instead of through capital. Uh, the street budget has the largest paving amount, as far as I can tell, in many years, so you should be able to run all paving projects through street funds. Um, I, I guess what I'm saying is, in fact, that the capital took such a hit because too many projects were in there. So, uh, it would be more appropriate to fund them from their actual funding sources.
Oh, yeah, well, they, I, I realize the gas tax increase and everything helped us on the street fund, but we still have a lot of capital improvement funds, infrastructure and stuff that needs addressed, and we need to get back to the, to the 1585 split as soon as we can.
Okay, motion to approve our report?
I'll second that.
Mr. Beckley?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, Barbara, I'm checking here. Um. I would just like to personally thank, uh, Taylor and Scott Frank for, the only thing that's changed in four years is those two. And we, we don't have the money problems that we're having, because the money is being watched better, so I'd like to thank you too. And that is, that is direct, that's the one thing that has changed in four years, is those two. So thank you very much for doing your jobs and doing what the correct way.
No, whatever.
Okay, um, we got some comments, I guess, I see.
I'll address them during my update.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not wasting my time, because if you can read, it does say, this is not a quota, thank you. So, um, let's move on, and let's go to, uh, Mr. Barber's here now, so would you like to do yours?
Yep.
All right, here you have the floor.
All right. I didn't think it was amazing we had a few run at the same time for the meetings, but, so make this short, I know we have some council members in here that wants, wants the game tonight.
That's right.
Um, so, uh, all enrolled firefighters that were enrolled in the MP class that successfully completed the MP program. Most are waiting, national registry testing COVID-19 has stopped, required EMS ride time, so we have a couple individuals that are still trying to make up the required ride time before they set for national registry. Firefighters Dunn and Mitchell have played the FIRE 2 course. This course is for the professional firefighter certification, uh, for full-time firefighter. Towards the end of the year, we had quite a few community events, so I'll just run through our list of community events really quick. On December 8th, we had civil service events for the firefighter candidates. This was the cognitive testing. This is the first step in a three-step process that we do as far as hiring for the fire department. The following weekend, we had, we, this was utility testing for those candidates, for, you know, for them to pass the cognitive test. Um, most of you have seen that all Christmas lights in my square and the shining streets were hung up by the fire department. And all the snowflake lights that you saw in the square. I have to say that, uh, my senior firefighter, Jeff Orange, replaced those bulbs, almost all of them by himself, to the tune of about 2,500 bulbs. So we were able, we were contacted in the chamber to see if they could get some help with us, uh, at Christmas time, so we tried to hop on some of these events. I'd also like to thank, uh, utility department crew. They actually moved the Christmas houses on the square again this year for us. They saved us a lot of time in doing that. On December 15th, we go to the Pomp and Peeve testing site along with the National Guard, Athens County Health Department, and the Nelsonville Police Department. We actually have another event coming up, the 18, tend to tune, same location. It's season three of our case for case this week. Uh, COVID-19 has affected, impacted our community significantly. Until December 16th, after we had discussions with, uh, actually, the person who started this discussion was, uh, Stephen and Scott Frank. We were in the bay talking about things that they used to do in Alaska, and, um, he shouldn't have done this, because he put the idea in my head to do parade. So we had many discussions with the fire bus in Santa Claus this year, and we decided we're gonna go Santa Parade, which actually worked out very well. It was perfect, you couldn't have asked for a better setup. It was very cold and wet, by the way, um, for those that weren't sitting outside for two hours. But I will say that during that event, I saw a lot of community members that, especially other community members that have been dealing with COVID personally, that couldn't leave their house, couldn't leave their homes, and I saw a lot of those, they do it out their windows, in their doorway. Where we, we were able to bring, just to ban this year, where they didn't get out of their homes, so I think it was a very good idea. To the point that I thought of the shaving, I think we're gonna go ahead and make it an annual event. So you can thank Scott for that one, because actually it was his idea. Didn't even happen. Um, my, I have to thank, uh, Councilman Sherman and Becky and a couple of the fire department members. Uh, you know, Dan actually did the, uh, the woodwork and cut the sleigh out, and they basically put it together, and then, uh, we had some pre-members paying in, decorating, and helped out with that as well, so. We tend to do things for the moment, we tend to, uh, I mean, that's how it worked the best, I guess, in the fire service, is we just tend to think that they come. We were able to pull it off in Van High, so it was a very good idea, and, uh, thank you Dan for the help.
Well.
Um. He's more than a pretty face.
I am.
So on December 17th and 8th, uh, we had a 14 with Jim Conrad, toy Christmas giveaway. Obviously, it was different this year as well with COVID, uh, 19, with pandemic that we've been dealing with. We were unable to bring children into the community, into the fire department to actually take out their gifts, uh, so we set everything outside. Ran them through the parking lot, we were still able to, um, give Christmas gifts to 199 families. That's awesome. Uh, also this year, uh, was the 72nd year for the Christmas tree basket program. Uh, for a number of years recently, the York County Fire Department has helped with program. This year, due to COVID-19, uh, restrictions and maybe some concerns, uh, York's chief decided that people aren't gonna do it this year. We went ahead and decided to do it, um. So, uh, we took care of that. We actually delivered the baskets with other, uh, city departments, and it worked very well. We included, uh, a lot of the other departments. For the first time in the history of the basket program, which is 72 years, we actually had the city manager, um, building and delivering baskets. Oh my goodness. And I will tell you that, I'm very happy to announce that the overs, the, the stuff that we bought extra from the fire department, might directly back into the community as well. Might directly to the good bank, so that was good, I'm glad to see that. All these events towards the end of December took place with overlapping calls, and I missed every event that we did. So my hats off to the crew that did a really good job, um, all the other departments that helped us, they did an outstanding job as well. Most of you know I concluded the first step in the hiring process for the firefighter candidates, did the remote interviews Friday. And I had my reclamation later, uh, with the city manager, he'll take care of that during the report. We're currently working on a year-end report like we posted last year. It is not ready yet, so it wasn't ready by this meeting. As soon as we get, uh, that ready, we'll be posting our Facebook page, where everybody can get through that, pictures and read everything we've got for the year. And as a reminder, I'm still actively tracking, uh, cases of COVID in the community. It's definitely more prevalent than people think. And I ask that we make sure we continue to stay diligent with that and keep our responders safe. Go ahead.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Now, I think we're time for ordinances. Okay, ordinance 01-21, I need someone to introduce it.
There it is.
And we're, ordinance authorizing the city manager and/or the city auditor pursuant to Ohio revise code, section 743.04, to file a lien against the real estate- section seven forty-three point zero four to file a lien against the real estate owner by a person or persons who have a delinquent water bill and declaring an emergency. Whereas, the Ohio Revised Code, section seven forty-three point zero four allows the municipality to authorize the city officials to file a lien against the real estate owned by a person or persons who have a delinquent water bill. Whereas, a person or person includes any person or entity that owns the real estate. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio that the city manager and/or the city auditor on behalf of the City of Nelsonville is hereby authorized to file a lien with the Athens County Auditor for Delinquent Water Bills in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, section seven forty-three point zero four attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that liens can be filed as soon as possible and this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon its adoption. Do令 enacted by council on first reading of suspension on the day, eleventh day of January two thousand twenty-one.
Any, uh, capital discussion?
Motion to suspend.
Second that.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Second. Okay. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
And we have a resolution twenty-two thirty-seven. I'll introduce it.
All right.
A resolution estimating the amount of interim money for deposit in public depositories directing the treasurer to take periodic applications and to award interim deposits as money as monies become available and declaring an emergency. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio that the City of Nelsonville, Ohio hereby declares that it will have during the five-year period from March seventh two thousand twenty-one to March sixth, two thousand twenty-sixth, a maximum of city money available to be awarded as interim deposits of five ninety dollars. That the treasurer of the City of Nelsonville shall accept periodic applications from eligible banks and savings and loan associations pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, chapter one thirty-five, as interim money become available. That the treasurer of the City of Nelsonville shall award interim deposits to the eligible institution or institutions which offer to pay the highest permissible rate of interest. That the treasurer of the City of Nelsonville shall notify the Nelsonville Council Finance Committee by letter on or before February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one of the maximum maximum amount of interim money the City of Nelsonville will have before the next couple periods. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the resolution is necessary so that the requirement of the Ohio Uniform Depository Act can be met and this resolution shall be in full force and effective upon its adoption. Do令 enacted by council on first reading of the suspension rule, December eighth, January two thousand twenty-one.
Any capital discussion? Motion to suspend. Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Motion to adopt. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Resolution twenty-two thirty-eight. Someone introduce it. I'll introduce it.
A resolution declaring the intent of the city council to designate the public depositories for the active funds of the City of Nelsonville, the term for receiving applications and the time for designation and declaring emergency. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio that the City of Nelsonville, Ohio hereby declares its intent to designate the public depositories for the active funds of the City of Nelsonville for a five-year period from March seventh, two thousand twenty-one to March sixth, two thousand twenty-sixth. An application from any eligible bank pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section, code, chapter one thirty-five for quintuple designation as active depositories shall be received by the city council from the tenth day of February until the seventeenth day of February, two thousand twenty-one with adequate notice of this resolution being given pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section one thirty-five point one zero and one thirty-five point one two. That the designation of depository or depositories shall be made for a period of five years commencing on the seventh day of March, two thousand twenty-one. That the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio shall be in ready for session on Monday, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one and designate a depository or depositors. This resolution is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, seven thirty-one point thirty that the immediate passage of the resolution is necessary so that the requirement of the Ohio Uniform Depository Act can be met and this resolution shall be in full force and effective upon its adoption. Do令 enacted by council on first reading of suspension of the rules this eleventh day of January, two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion? Motion to suspend. I'll move. Second.
Um, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Smith?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Move. Second.
Trying to get you involved, bud.
I'll try.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. City managers' report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, we'll start out first with the firefighter recommendations, the following, with Chief Barber said. And, um, all the candidates that I'll be mentioning tonight have passed their BCI and FBI background checks, their social media has been background checked. They all passed the, uh, uh, civil service test, they passed the physical agility test, and then through the interview process, we racked and stacked them. Uh, the first one, the first three rather, are already current provisional employees, and I'd like to recommend making them, uh, permanent part-time employees. And the first one is, uh, Stevie Mitchell. We have to do them all one by one.
Motion to approve the hiring of Stevie Mitchell.
Yeah, second.
Yeah. Right side then. For the city manager's request.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yep.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, the, uh, the next provisional firefighter I'd recommend to, uh, be, uh, part-time is Tommy Mitchell. Nope.
Okay. So, motion to approve the hiring of Tommy Mitchell.
Tommy?
Tommy Mitchell per the city manager's request and Chief Barber.
Second.
Right side.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Duffy?
Yes.
The next, uh, individual I'd like to recommend is currently a volunteer firefighter with us, and that is Mr. Dalton Lee.
Motion to hire Mr. Dalton Lee on city manager's and Chief Barber's request.
Second.
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
All right, the next one is Mr. Andrew Henry, uh, currently coming out of, uh, Weldon Fire, and he would be coming up here. And then the other guy I'm about to recommend from Weldon that's done a lot with our department already and, uh, trained with our guys through several different, uh, courses there with the Boston Hennery. Andrew Henry, Andrew Henry, motion to approve the hiring of Andrew Henry for the city manager and Chief Barber's request.
Second. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
All right, and the last one is Mr. Nathan Sims.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the hiring of Mr. Nathan Sims per the city manager's and Chief Barber's request. Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right. It's great. I'll try to breeze through the rest of it. I know there's, uh, other events happening tonight. COVID test on the eighteenth of this month from ten to two at the high school again. The, uh, uh, we got all the paperwork and sent in the check for the bridge replacement on, um, Trash Power Road. AKA, what am I bringing up? Wood Lane, AKA Wood Lane, uh, so that could sure, that would be going out the bid soon from ODOC. And, uh, that bridge will get torn up soon and it'll be down for hopefully less than a month, but I'm afraid to put a timeline on it. The Church Street, uh, bids came in, or late last week, and Mr. Betzelbe giving council a formal recommendation letter. They came in better than, uh, we anticipated, which is a good thing. Uh, we had a meeting today with interested parties in bidding for the trash contract and got on a level playing field and, uh, you know, standardized questions that they had for us and were able to clarify a lot of things. The, uh, firefighter, uh, you know, just work out the public now. I don't know if they saw it or not, the, I know those of you who have social media and I could, I tagged you in it for the hot box, for the asphalt hot box. Uh, it's still in Cincinnati. We'll get, get over and grab it sometime later this month and, uh, with some other supplies. So, uh, guys are excited to use it and I'm excited to, uh, put them to use and clean up the street for a bit. The last thing I have is we will be doing a public announcement for a utility worker. Uh, possibly tomorrow, but most likely Wednesday, so we have a vacancy and, uh, looking forward to getting a lot of applicants and, uh, that'll be in utility, doing everything from streets to distribution, you name it. And and then the last thing is just a thank you to all the team, uh, police, fire, utility. Uh, you guys just heard the fire update from December. They rocked it. Um, same goes in all the departments. They've just been, uh, producing like crazy. So I can't say enough about all those guys and thank them for what they're doing, and that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Great. Good to your work. It's great.
Yeah, I would just like to say thanks too to all the workers and, um, the street sweeper I seen, Councilman running. So, thank you.
In January, thirty-six degrees.
Just in the interest of brevity, just, uh, you know, thanks to all the people that are invested in getting our, our town turned around. A very heartfelt thank to all you gentlemen that are doing a great job.
Oh. No, he didn't. He did. Good job.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to, um, kind of echo, uh, Chief Barber's comments about COVID. I know we all have COVID fatigue at this point, but it's important to stay diligent about social distance and masking. We've lost, um, a very good, uh, person last week from COVID, a long time, lifetime Nelsonville resident. We lost several, um, this year. And I encourage everybody to stay diligent and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to, if you want to, get back vaccinated soon. Take advantage of testing if you think you're best exposed. Just stay focused.
Mr. Smith?
I want to echo the COVID thing and encourage people when they get a chance to get vaccinated. Uh, uh, we have, we definitely have lost some community members that are, that were valuable community members. And we had other people that come close to dying. And I don't think quite little, uh, reactions there's been to people who's had a reaction to the vaccine, that they've not been serious. You know, maybe your arm hurts for a day or so, but, uh, it hardly compares with, uh, uh, you know, your family not seeing you be, or anymore because you caught COVID and you died, so I would encourage everybody when they get a chance, so I've been told that I'll be able to get mine within the next ten days, so I'm gonna line up, roll up my sleeve, and I would encourage everybody else to line up and roll up their sleeve because it is really the only thing that's going to defeat it and get everybody back to work, and I would just hope that everybody did that. Go Bucks, and I also hope that, that we have a good game and nobody gets hurt. You have a great, you guys have a great new year.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Taylor?
Sure. Well, I want to say congratulations to my Brownies. They win last night. They won a playoff game, so, uh, good luck to all of our, uh, uh, lady and, uh, men Buckeyes as well as tonight, the Ohio State Buckeyes. And good luck, and I echo Greg. Hopefully we have a good game and everybody is safe, so no major injuries, so. But, uh, I'll call it that.
Mr. Sherman? Mr. Sherman?
Okay. Well,
Don't.
Oh, no.
Don't.
I wanted to, sorry.
Oh, boy.
Uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, I support the city managers in response to the threat from the county commissioner, any license for wanting to sue the city. Nelsonville has canceled the nine-one-one contract. Too many years the Athens County Commissioners have treated the City of Nelsonville like a cash cow. Our citizens deserve better. They should remember that when they are treated that way. Uh, just take a look at it again when you, you're, it comes time to the vote for the county commissioners. That's all I'm gonna say. Plus, very happy with the Browns' win over Pittsburgh, when, God, that was wrong away. Thank you, uh, Chief Barber, for your services during December. And, uh, everybody have a good year. Go Bucks.
Mr. Duffy? Good, okay. Um, I would like to reiterate, everyone, that COVID is real. Uh, we did lose a very close, uh, family friend, uh, and I'm gonna say her name. Her name was Judy Pritchfield. She was a wonderful lady. Uh, almost like a, a second, almost like a grandmother to my kids. Uh, she helped raise them, and it made it real. Uh, they would say that it's, it's not real until it happens to you. Well, with the tech, so everybody stay safe. Please listen to the guidelines and follow them. That's all I can say, and, uh, uh, thank you to, once again, to, uh, Mr. Scott Frank and Mr. Taylor Sappington. Uh, the city is in a better financial place for the first time in years, uh, four years, and like I said before, the only thing that changes is you two, so we appreciate your job, so thank you very much. And
we've received a notification from the, the control board that, um, Rocky, Frank, Rocky Bucarel has applied for a liquor license. This is just a
Just a notification.
Formality. Basically, if there is a problem and you want to have a hearing with the liquor control board. Basically, if there is a problem and you want to have a hearing with the liquor control board, um,
Contact them.
We have to contact them, but if, if nobody objects, then I'll just sign it instead of acting. I have no objection.
I have none. Me neither. Just for
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that the council has no objection.
Second.
Hold on. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Booze?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frank, you had something to say.
I just wanted to put it out there, the date also coordinated with the police chief as well, prior to this, so. If you have no, no objections either.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, so we have a motion to go in the executive session. No, we don't?
I don't know.
Yes, we do. Do we need to go into the?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, motion to go into executive session, ORC, for one-twenty-one dash twenty-two, chief personal and legal matters.
Manager and
Manager and city
City attorney.
City manager and city attorney. Over. Second. Same by the area.
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Booze?
Yes.
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes, and I'll remind you, we have nine minutes left.
Keep it moving, Gary. Y'all know this is your street of home.
Is that you? Motion to come out with executive session. So move. Second.
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booze?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All right. Uh, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booze?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, good night, thanks for
Have a good night, go Buckeyes.